Session, we have Mike Dyke here from the Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue. So, welcome Mike and a couple of your associates. So, we're excited to hear your presentation.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Governor, and Councilman, thanks for the opportunity.
No.
Oh, you have to push the button.
Push the button hard.
It's actually our first test for you.
And so, that's the other thing. So, this is a little different for Chief Dyke. We're having the session here in our regular council table room because we really felt like the public would like to have an opportunity to hear the information. And so, you know, with that in mind, we're bringing him to a new area. Sorry about that. And so, thanks for working with our Mike.
Well, so, it's very self-explanatory. Red means stop and green means go. The chief coaches me on that often.
Yes.
I did, yeah, with me tonight is Division Chief Brian Scherrard and Public Affairs Officer, Officer Stefan Myers. So, they're here as my roadies. So, during the presentation, if any mics fall or anything, they'll jump up and take care of that for us. So, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Tonight, this is a topic that several years ago, we were extremely nervous about what was happening and frankly, didn't understand fully what was going on in the region. And it caused us to really want to dig in deep as to what's, you know, what was behind our property tax system? How does it work? Is there anything that we could actually understand that would better prepare us as municipalities to work within the constraints of the systems and frankly, do a better job for our constituents in our communities? So, I'm going to cover with you. I'm hopefully, hoping this is an interactive presentation on, you know, navigating difficult times and really talking about what is, I think, for all of us, one of our major revenue-generating sources, and that's the property tax system here in Oregon. So, I mentioned, you know, what happened. You know, Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue is a special district. We are 100% property tax-funded. There are some small segments of our business that do generate some fees. We're doing some work nowadays in ambulance transport. There's a few other things, but in totality, we're still in the high 90% property tax-funded when it comes to what we do. Prior to 2007, you know, the economy was going great. Washington County was booming. I think we all were experiencing some tremendous growth and things were going very well. We had the difference between our real market values, or RMV, and the assessed values splits were big. Every year, the Washington County assessor would say, you know, you're going to receive increases in the tax revenue that was generated 3% or more. In many cases, it was "or more." Our budget processes really didn't align well. We made some assumptions on what we thought was going to happen as far as how we budgeted. We didn't have a lot of information to tell us what the assessor was going to actually deliver to us in November of every fiscal year when the tax revenue actually comes in after the bills. A lot of this information was frankly, not clear to organizations like TVFNR and the cities and the counties. And that's not just to say here locally, but across the state. You know, we were doing some good work when it came to partnerships and collaboration, but I think we didn't really understand what was happening. And then, the downturn happened. So, what I want to talk to you about exactly what happened, how our taxing structure works, what is happening now, what did happen to us, and we'll be able to actually walk back through from 2007 until today on what we've seen the trend lines do. What should we be doing and what can we do? And how we should really be partnering in the future? So, just, and some of this may be some, you know, information that you already know, but for those of you that don't spend a lot of time studying Oregon statutes or remember all the measures that come through year after year. In 1990, a measure called Measure Five was passed by the Oregon voters. And that was, that was to set a rate limit on what local governments could charge in total property taxes within two different bracketed areas. One was the schools or education side of the taxing structure, and the other was general government. General government encompasses the cities, City of Sherwood, the counties, the special districts, really everybody but education. Education encompassed the local, like Sherwood School District, the PCC, the education-based local governments. And it put $5, a $5 limit in what they could charge in totality on the school side and a $10 limit on the general government side. That seemed to work pretty well, but over the course of the years following that, again, Oregon voters through an initiative process passed another measure that initially was called Measure 47, later to be morphed into Measure 50. And that changed us from just having one taxable value to two. It actually separated real market values and created this artificial value that taxes are assessed to called assessed valuation. And that's a, that's a specific nuance for Oregon. There's a lot of states that don't have two different taxing values that they watch and monitor to facilitate their structure, but that came from Measure 50 in 1997. It actually, in addition to decoupling real market value, because if you were around the area in 97, you'll remember that building was booming, market values were skyrocketing, and so were taxes, or at least what people were being charged in taxes. And it was the intent of the voters to decouple them and actually roll them back into an assessed valuation line that was 90% of what it was two years prior or in 1995, and then set it on a course where it could only increase 3% per year. And I'll walk through some graphs that you'll be able to see clearly what that did. But that was, that was the two measures that really, and I should say two slash three, because 47 was repealed into 50, that really have set in course how our taxing structure works here in Oregon. So, how this calculation plays out in every single property, every single home across the state is there's two calculations that happen. One is a calculation of the assessed valuation times the tax rate that occurs, and that's the tax that is generated line by line. Every single taxing authority calculates that down, and that is put into a spreadsheet. Then it goes across and a similar conversation happens where they take the real market value times that maximum category rate, and that equals how much is allowed to be taxed in both the general government side and the education side. And if, if the number on the general government side is higher than that on what's maximum, the maximum allowed, that's referred to as compression, and that is not allowed. So, you're not allowed to actually charge or pay more, be charged more and have to pay more in taxes than your real market value through this calculation actually allows. And I'll show you some examples on how that could occur. But this, this is a calculation that isn't a city calculation. It's actually tax lot by tax lot, structure by structure. And you could have one structure that is not in compression and the one next door is. It really, and I'll show you also how we actually monitor this, and we're going to share some data with the city on how you can actually watch what's happening in your jurisdictions. So, what we saw, I mentioned that Measure 50 created two separate values on each property. What this did, and if you look to the far left of the graph, that Measure 47-50 happened in 1997. That, that actually rolled back the new assessed value. There wasn't anything, there wasn't assessed value or assessed valuation or that actual category didn't exist before 1997 and that, when that measure was created. So, that actually rolled it back two years and set it at two years prior, market values at 90%. So, you can see the line actually drops down and then starts. What that did for organizations like the City of Sherwood, TVFNR, and others is we received more in 96, and in 97, we actually lost money. For TVFNR, this, this change in value actually meant we laid off 50 firefighters in order to kick that measure off. It was, it was a substantial hit based, depending on the organization you were and how property tax-dependent that you were. TVFNR being 100% property tax-funded and a very person-intensive organization or a service provider, it was a big hit. Others, maybe not so much, but everybody took a hit. And you can see though, what occurred was market values were allowed to do what they did, which was, you know, go up in value in 2007, eight, nine, things really took off, and then they crashed. We had the economic downturn occur, and now you can see we're actually tailing out of it in the market values. Assessed valuation just continues to march along at 3% increase as long as real market value allows it. This is showing you an actual property value aggregate in Washington County. If you did this by each individual property, it would be a different shaped graph, but all in all, it would, it would do the same thing. The assessed valuations move up at 3% and everything else follows so long as real market values move with it. What happens when they don't move with it is illustrated in this. And I said you could never, when we, when I showed you the house with the two calculations and you can only pay the assessed valuation tax rate allowed as long as it's not less than the real market value calculation. Well, one of the things that also influences that is what this is called value compression. So, there's rate compression when the rates are higher than $10 on the general government side and value compression when they're, and rate compression if they're more than $5 on the education side. But you can also have what's called value compression where the price someone pays for their home, if the price drops and actually drops to the point that assessed valuation is trending, it will actually take it down with it. And that, that creates another nuance called maximum assessed valuation. You probably already see why members of the community have a difficult time understanding our taxing structure. It's extremely complex. There's a lot of variables at play, and, but all this affects how we actually can assess properties and charge taxes. But if market values actually trend to assessed valuation, even though that's going up at a 3% per year trend line, it'll actually take it down with it. And as you can see that tail off, you can actually, you would actually collect less in taxes because the market values are pushing down assessed valuations. Is there a question?
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Yes, Chief. So, assessed value only happens every few years when the county assessors go out to assess the house, right?
Not necessarily. So, there's, there's, there's times when the assessor show up and actually do a physical audit of an individual property. But there's another process that happens every year, and that's by property class, where an assessor will look at residential properties within this tax code, and they'll actually look at the market sales that occurred, the RMLF sales, and they'll do an audit and a calculation of that actually in January of each year that will set the rate of increase that they'll see in those market, real market value trends that end up getting delivered to those citizens in their tax bills
Right.
in the fall of that year.
So, that's why it drags it down? That's why the market, real market
That's, yeah. In this particular case, yeah, that, that was what caused that. And maybe if we all, I mean, if we all flash back for a second, I think it was 2009, 10, when Deschutes County was kind of ground zero in the economic downturn around Bend. And there was a lot of stories in the media at that time where homes were plummeting in value that, and it was because that particular market developed like crazy. I mean, Bend was taken off and developers were putting up homes and condos and everything as fast as they could. It was a booming community, which one thing I will, will show you in some maps that we have is actually the areas that are, were the newest around the downturn were the ones that corrected the most. If it was a 1960s or 70s property, those had been pretty solid. And although they corrected also, they didn't correct as abruptly as the ones that were basically built and purchased at the height of the market. I mean, they bought high and, and then they ended up selling low in some cases. What happened though is there, this is showing actually an example of something that could have occurred here in the, in the Washington County area. In, in Deschutes County, it was actually even a bigger dip that it took assessed valuation down. But remember I said when those two lines cross, it creates another indicator that's called maximum assessed valuation. It's also, the tax assessor refers to it as MAV. So, you have RMV, AV, and MAV. Maximum assessed value is the figure that actually calculates what that maximum assessed value, that a property that can go up each year. So, and that is 3% or whatever it is to get back to the MAV line. If the delta, and I'm trying to kind of guess here where the numbers are, but let's say that just for the discussion, that green line is about $205,000, and the low, the low part of the line is $150,000. If you had a market correction where someone was able to, there was a number of sales and the market really took off again, you could actually see greater than 3% increase all the way straight up to that green line if the market would bear it, which is actually what happened in Deschutes County. When the market came back, they saw property tax increases of greater than 3% per year, and that's because the market was correcting that fast. You may have seen some news stories where citizens were upset that their taxes were going up so high, they hadn't voted for anything, none of the jurisdictions had added any taxes. It was just the way the statutes work. And fortunately for us, we don't have this going on anymore, and this wouldn't occur with the downturn that we just went through, but a future downturn, if, you know, knock on wood, that doesn't happen, we could see something like this occur, and it's just the way the statutes work. So, you could have greater than 3% increases in taxes without any new taxes added to the books. Nothing happens other than the markets correcting faster than that. And that's where real market value starts to drive the rates that people charge. How this all equates out is, and remember, assessed valuation is the factor that we multiply our tax rate by. So, for TVFNR, our permanent tax rate is $1.52 per thousand. You get to multiply that by that assessed valuation number. When you're trying to calculate how much real market value is though, they actually do the calculation by the real market value number. And remember the graph that showed real market value higher than assessed value? So, the taxes that you're charged are based on the assessed valuation number. The, when, the calculation that occurs to tell you that you're in compression is based on the real market value number. And that's why, and it's later in my presentation, but the Sherwood, your, your community's education taxes are, I want to say, $7 per thousand. It's seven and change. That's higher than the $5 number I mentioned earlier in the presentation. The reason that that's allowed to be charged, and it's, it's obviously supported by the community, local option levies are approved, and that's, that's the community's desire to charge that. They actually get to collect that so long as the real market value calculation times that assessed valuation rate allows it to occur. So, $5 and $10 per thousand are only limits that local governments are allowed to assess. You could have multiple local governments that actually charge different rates, and it could exceed $5 or $10 per thousand so long as the real market value calculation allows for it to occur. You can see that back to 2007, we could have had a number of local governments have permanent rates and local option levies that when you totaled them all together on an individual tax lot, it could have been $18.47, the green bar in 2007, eight, and that would have been collected. Because the real market value is the variable that is used to determine whether you're in compression. The only time that $5 and $10 come into play is when real market value and assessed value are the same. Then $5 is $5, and $10 is $10. I know this is probably confusing, but this is again, the, the way the system works. On the, on the, on the, I'll call it pink. In 2007, eight, you can see that the schools or the education side of the house could have charged, could have charged, and these are only what there would have been allowed before they got into compression, $9.24. The dotted line that you see is actually the percentage of real market value that assessed valuation is. In 2006, seven, or seven, eight, it was, assessed valuation was at 54% of what real market value is. That, real market value started correcting during the downturn, and you can see it got as low or they got as close as 78%. AV got 78% of, of the real market value number. And now, we're starting to see them split apart, and it's actually moved about 7% farther apart again. So, not unlike the rest of the region, real market values are accelerating faster than 3% since the economic downturn. And that's why the maximum tax rate that is allowed on the general government side for this year, or for actually last year, was $14.08 and $7.04 on the education side. Does that make sense? And you get this presentation so you can look at it several times. This is extremely confusing even for local governments trying to understand and when, you know, I know there's even today, there, I think it's the Washington County Soil and Water District, or is, they're contemplating a tax rate, which makes those of us that currently have rates in the system a little nervous about, okay, is that going to throw us into compression? The likelihood is probably not today based on real market and AV split, but if those numbers came together, there are some tax codes across Washington County that are greater than $10 per thousand that would be compressed, but it's specific to each community.
Okay, I have a question for you. So, I'm trying to think of how to, the question to ask. If you have a property that is, your compression rate can change year to year
Yes, it can.
based on market value, right? So, if you have, if you have a bunch of levies that were passed and you have whatever the market will bear, you're not in compression, but you're close. Let's just say you've got a four-year levy, and in two years, certain homes are going to come into compression in any given taxing district or whatever. Who determines who gets
Who gets compressed?
the allocated money? Yeah.
So, that's all been dialed out in statute. And how it works is permanent rates are the most secure. So, the city's permanent rate, the city, does the city have a local option levy? No. So, the city will be fine when it comes to compression. The first, the first rates that are attacked in a compression scenario are local option levies. So, TVFNR has a local option levy. They're, they're on the general government side. I don't think, maybe the Port or Trimed, I think, might have some, there might be, let's just say there's three or four different jurisdictions that have local option levies. They are proportionally backed out based on their rate. So, if TVFNR's was 45 cent, but let's say Trimed had one that was 10 cents, then maybe TVFNR would lose 20 cents and Trimed would lose 5 cents. But they would all be backed out until the properties were no longer in compression or they were right at that line that was allowed under that rate. But after, after local option levies are taken away, then it starts to attack the permanent rates, and they start to back down again proportionally. General obligation bonds are not part of the calculation. So, when the schools go for a geo bond to build capital or an organization goes out for a geo bond to, to build something, usually they're capital construction bonds. Those are not part of the calculation. They're not subject to the $5 and $10 limit, and they are not affected by this, this phenomenon.
Do you get local option levy like Trimed or Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue, planning for compression so that they anticipate that compression will occur so they automatically ask for a greater percentage on their levy than they need?
No, you're not actually allowed to do that. And, but we actually, one of the, one of the things that we'll talk about in the future, we can actually model it. I mean, that we're actually learning a lot about how real estate values affect what is going on, and we can actually somewhat predict today. This is a tool that didn't exist, or at least we didn't have this tool prior to the downturn to where we could actually speculate what was going to happen when it comes to, to our actual revenues. And then, we can make, you know, take steps to insulate the community to the extent we can from impact.
Okay.
We can, you know, back down on at least the, those things that are not essential, defer certain projects or other things so that we can get through whatever is causing that, that issue.
Okay. Thank you.
So, this is, and this is your specific information. So, this is specific to the city and what is, what has been your trend line from 2007 to 2016. So, you can see, and you're nowhere close to this, and I don't know that your, your community would withstand $14.08 per thousand in taxable value, but that's not to say that doesn't exist in the metro area. There are areas that are well over $14 a thousand in, around the city of Portland. In some of the, some parts of the different, Multnomah County area, there's some significant tax rates, and they actually collect them, and they're not in compression because of this issue of real market value and assessed value are very different. Also, you know, again, just to show it without the, without the actual taxable value figures, this is the trend line that occurred. The blue line is your Measure Five value or your real market value. And then, that AV to M5 value is that dotted line. So, assessed valuation just keeps on truckin'. It moves at 3% so long as the real market value will allow it. And, and it, it moves up at that 3% per year. And typically, what we talk about, at least at the staff level, level is we will receive, it looks to, that will, looks, that we will receive 3% plus growth. And what that means is a lot that was vacant that now has, has been developed and has a structure on it, and that comes on the rolls obviously with a different real market value that equates to a different assessed value. That is the beginning point for that property on what that assessed value is going to be and how the tax rates apply to that property. So, that's why, you know, for, like us for instance, you know, hey, we, our rate went up 4%. It didn't mean that everybody's rate went up 4%, it meant everybody's rate went up 3%, and then we had some new construction come on the rolls that caused the overall rate to go higher than 3% and what the total taxable value that we received went up. So, that's how that works. I wanted to talk just a little bit, one, because Sherwood has an urban renewal district, but there's yet another complexity that I just want to make sure you understood. And it's, this is one that, again, we didn't really understand how it all worked until the downturn because up until then, we didn't have a reason to understand it. But there's a nuance of an urban renewal district where it actually creates a taxable value that is, the revenue that an urban renewal district collects or the increment that it collects at the beginning of the urban renewal plan is actually aligned with the general government side. So, you can see in this example, we have a total rate of $9.05, which is the actual rate that you have in, and this is tax code 88.30 in Sherwood. This is one example we grabbed just to show how it works. But the total rate within the, that tax code of the city is a $9.05 rate. $4.39 the city rate, the county rate's 253. This is actually going back to the inception of the urban renewal plan in Sherwood, which year one was 2001. And, and at that time, the fire rate was 159. Uh, and, and at that time, the fire rate was one fifty-nine. MPT is metro, the port and Trimet. And that in total, um, was fifty-five cent. And because it was the new urban renewal district, the current increment was zero, zero. They had not gone through a tax year to collect any increment. On the school side, it was an eight dollar and four cent. Now remember, I said we could only collect five dollars on the school side unless the real market value was different than the assessed value. And in this case, it actually was. So they were collecting eight dollars and four cents on the school side. Seven fifty-one was actually the K-12 schools. Uh, the ES, Washington County Educational Service District, you can see it fifteen cents. And the, and PCC was thirty-seven cents back in two thousand and one. Total combined rate, pay particular attention to what happens to the school's rate in the top of the house and the government rate in the top of the house. Um, this is looking five years in and you can see what happened to that urban renewal increment on the far right. Now there's a dollar one of increment that was taken from each one of the different taxing jurisdictions to help pay for the bonds that do the improvements in the urban renewal district. And then there's a forty-six cent piece on top that actually came from all of the school taxing authority, uh, taxing authorities as their increment. And it actually pulls that money again over the, to the urban renewal side. The one thing that we saw in the Tiger Tuolton School District because of this is you can actually get rates that are higher than ten dollars or what normally would have happened on the general government side. That actually throws things into compression on the general government side. And on the school side, if it was already in compression, can actually take the school or the education side out of compression. And that, and I mentioned the first thing, the first things that are attacked in, uh, in compression were local option levies. Tiger Tuolton actually saw, they started to receive more of their local option levy because they were not getting it all because of compression. And it actually created a scenario where they were receiving more of their, their personal local option levy as a result of that urban renewal district. That was something that we didn't understand until, uh, really the downturn happened. And some of these, um, issues were, were, had cropped up and we had conversations with the county assessor. Um, you can see then, looking ten years in to your urban renewal district, you can see that that increment's gotten higher. I'll just flashback for a second. So back to the year one, government, government rate nine oh five. In five years, nine eighty-two, and now ten years, nine fifty-eight. Uh, the reason that it changed was some of the rates changed. So, local option levies expire, different rates happen. It causes things to, um, balance out. The other nuance you have going on within Sherwood is the actual urban renewal district is only five point eight percent of the city. I think by statute, you're allowed to go as high as twenty-five percent for the city, the size of Sherwood. So it's a small urban renewal district. There are other cities in the region where they've actually knocked right on that twenty-five percent mark. And that's what, in that, those particular cases, the actual impacts of that UR line can be higher on the overall compression issue when, when you're talking about the general government side. But you can see ten years in, or ten years in, uh, we have a larger amount of increment that's moved over. And, and this is just something that we didn't completely understand how it all affected everything. Uh, and I ran it out to fifteen years, which is actually almost pretty much now, uh, where, where you're at. And it, it appears to me, even though your, the government rate is nine eighty-nine, uh, we probably won't have a compression air, issue here in Sherwood 'cause we haven't even got to ten dollars yet. And the likelihood of real market values equaling assessed valuation is probably extremely low. Especially within the urban renewal district that's designed to actually make real market values outpace assessed valuation. So, um, it, but it's something that we definitely, between, uh, the city staff and the fire district and others, we watch this issue to make sure that we aren't gonna have something happen that's gonna start to affect the rates that, uh, are being charged. So, are any questions on that issue? Okay. So, um, I wanna walk through, so as a fire district, um, when, when I was, uh, I became fire chief in two thousand and ten, right smack dab in the middle of the economic downturn. Uh, my first year as fire chief, uh, we launched a budget. And I had, uh, my chief financial officer coming to me saying, "We're not receiving the revenue that we thought we were gonna receive." Uh, something's, you know, "We're seeing property values correct a lot more dramatically." Uh, we came through that process and we were, uh, we, we were successful and we survived, obviously. Uh, but it, but it really caused, uh, myself and staff to say, "Is there a better way we can understand what's happening in the region? Are there tools that we could utilize that we have today that could better tell the story as what's going on?" And then can we partner with our, uh, with our partners like the cities and the county about, "Hey, how can we make sure that these issues, maybe, maybe that we can't keep them from happening, but we can better understand when they're happening and how we can help alleviate those, uh, tension issues and compression issues that are causing issues with our budgets?" So I, one thing that the fire district is pretty good at, I think, and that is creating maps. Maps that help tell the story as to what's going on. We have maps that tell what it's a response performance, where incidents are occurring, uh, how long it takes us to get a, uh, a vehicle extrication tool set from one part of the district to another. We can tell map, we have maps to do everything. So I asked the finance staff, "Can you, can you take the data from the assessor's office and actually put it on a map to show me what's happening in the county?" They actually sat down with the assessor's office and said, "Based on what we've seen that they have, we think we can." So we actually did that. Um, we actually created maps during the economic downturn that would show, and, and, um, so I've talked to you a lot about assessed valuation and real market value. And, and I can just tell you, the warmer the map, the worse it's getting. Uh, the warmer the map, the closer the assessed valuation and real market value, uh, is getting. So red means they're the same. Orange means they're right next to each other. Uh, blue means we're, we got some spread. And you can see by the graph in the upper left, uh, blue means, uh, it's almost a hundred, it's ninety-nine percent apart or, or up to forty-nine percent.
Mm-hmm.
When you get to the, the little bit warmer blue, it goes to fifty, then sixty, seventy, all the way up to a hundred.
Chief, is it safe to say as you get warmer, those are properties approaching compression or?
Those, that means that either, that means that the value is coming down to assessed valuation and either touched it and taking it with it, or is just touching it. It's at a hundred percent of, uh, the, the, the assessed valuation and real va- real market value numbers are the same. And, and what this has helped us understand when it comes to what's going on in the region, and it's not that we always want, um, because it's not, it, it's, it would not be accurate to say that the blue areas are just prospering and they're, they're the ones that are really taking off. It could actually be in really old property that was assessed decades ago and the real market value has climbed and, and it's just going up a three percent. But this is the kinda map that we started to share with our cities to, with their knowledge around economic development, the projects they're working on. Really, I mean, they're the experts. The cities are the experts in economic development. When we started to share this information with them, they could talk about, "Well, we know about these issues. We didn't know about those issues." And they could start to understand if there was anything we could do other than brace for an impact, uh, when it came to our budgets. We did this, uh, starting in two thousand and ten. You can see in two thousand and twelve, it got warmer. I'm gonna flip to the next slides. You can see it got even warmer. And, and what we experienced in the downturn, because remember, the assessor collects information in January that plays out in November of each year. So, by the time we see it, it's actually a year behind. And really, their information is a year behind that because they're actually looking in January about what happened the last calendar year. So, so what we saw in the downturn occur was what we would actually see happen when it came to the impacts on the local taxing districts was two years later. And that's why two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen was a couple of years after the downturn. Things were actually starting to turn around, but it just takes time to actually see the impact. You can see how much more, um, uh, more red, uh, things have gotten. Um, I don't know if I have, it doesn't show up on the cursor. But I don't know if you know the geography, uh, well, but obviously Sherwood's in the lower left corner. Uh, the, actually, there's an unincorporated area that's in blue. And then the ne- the first community up along Highway ninety-nine is Sherwood. Uh, Tuolton and a lot of that industrial area, Tuolton's the red area. Uh, if you go straight up in the map, you can kinda see the Beaverton area. Um, the, the diagonal line that kinda crisscrosses towards the top, that's Highway twenty-six. And, uh, anyway, based on the geography, the big red area, right kinda smack in the middle, the big block, that's Nike. Um, uh, uh, again, um, there's another nuance that happens with commercial industrial properties where they're not assessed the same way residential properties are. Um, this is, um, and this is TVFNR's portion of Washington County. So, for us, residential properties make up seventy-eight percent of our, of our property inventory. The other, the other twenty-two percent is industrial, commercial. Um, so, we're mostly residential and this, uh, so we, we really watch those areas. And then when you get actually into two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, you can see the maps cooling off. Things are recovering nicely, um, but, but we're, um, seeing some nice trends when it comes to, uh, again, the tools that the economic development groups, uh, the cities, the counties, uh, and frankly, just the market is correcting things well. Um, if you, um, uh, if you go back, I'll go back to, um, when things started to turn, you can see the, the, the red value, uh, was, uh, twelve point nine percent in two thousand and twelve. It got up to fourteen point eight in fourteen. Um, and then, um, and that was really the peak of it. But we had fourteen point eight at a hundred percent, another fourteen percent, uh, in, in the ninety to ninety-nine. And that was starting to concern us because that's when you start to see some value compression issues. Two thousand and sixteen, things are looking, things are looking good. And, um, and, and then, uh, and that's where we were with TVFNR. I'm okay on time, right? I, I think I had about fifteen minutes. Yeah, we'll be fine. Um, so then I wanted to really drill down and so this, these are some Sherwood specific data. Uh, the same maps that I showed you with all of TVFNR, and these are specific to Sherwood. So, again, starting in two thousand eleven, um, I mean, all was well, everybody was happy. Uh, things were going along nicely. Uh, obviously, you can see the, the old town, older town portions. Those are blue because you had a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, properties that were probably assessed a long time ago. And, and there was a pretty good split between where the market values have, had gone to and, and where, um, their assessed valuation was. Obviously, some of the commercial properties along Highway ninety-nine, some of those are just assessed at a hundred percent period uh, based on the tax law. Uh, but some others actually follow that same AV, RMV methodology that I spoke of. And then a lot of the housing developments you can see were in that kinda yellow, the cooler yellow. In two thousand and twelve, things started getting a little warmer because market values were coming down. Uh, you get into thirteen, things got even warmer and you started to see even more orange and red properties. Uh, in fourteen, uh, more of the same, uh, although it appears in some cases, things were already starting to correct for Sherwood, uh, in that case. Uh, and then on into fifteen and sixteen, and actually, things look like they're doing really well. Uh, you know, these are some maps that are shape files that we can, um, we'll, we'll give the new maps to the city so you can drill down. And, and I think it's really instructive for staff to actually drill down and look at the other nuances and the other data points that they collect when it comes to, uh, what's, what's really on the city's, uh, list of projects and how that could have an effect on, uh, market values in the future. Uh, but, but these, these maps have really shown us, um, a better, given us a better understanding when it comes to, uh, what is happening and what, what areas we should be concerned of when, uh, when these things are occurring. You know, the, the fact is, there's, um, there's a lot of things going on when it comes to each, uh, individual's tax bill. Uh, this is just one example back in two thousand and eleven, but you got a lot of different bonds. Uh, some are old bonds, some are new bonds that just, um, came on the rolls, some haven't been paid off yet. Uh, local option levies and other things that, uh, there's a lot of different traffic. And all these things are calculated out, uh, in when it comes to what is allowed under the statutes, under that five and ten dollar rule, um, albeit, you know, calculated with that real market value that I spoke of, both on the education side and the general government side. I mentioned that, um, process that legs. You know, one of the things that I, I mentioned, the assessor collects, um, you know, in this example, in two thousand and twelve, they look at property sales for a calendar year. And then they do the analysis for a couple of months on what occurred by property type, uh, to really give them the figures that they need to utilize to calculate the new tax bills. That occurs in January through, through March of each calendar year. They send it on to the Department of Revenue, uh, at the state to, to va- to validate it. They audit it, make sure it's accurate. Then they publish it back to each county. All thirty-six counties get that information back. They certify the tax rolls and they send the bills out, uh, in October. And then we start collecting our revenue in November and December based on whether people pay through escrow or early or however it works. The thing that we'd like to, uh, understand, we can buy the same RMLUS data that they're looking at and by property type, actually understand what are we gonna receive when it comes to the tax rolls with the fair, I think, a fairly high incidence of accuracy. Uh, and maybe have a better budget process where we not, we're not guessing as much what we think is gonna happen when it comes to the assessor's, um, calculations that come back from the state. Frankly, you know, three, three months into when our fiscal year already started, uh, we could have that information much more accurate, uh, early on during that budget process that I'm sure you all sit through in the first quarter of the year versus finding out in this, in the last quarter of the year, what really happened. And, and this is, uh, I think, one of the things that we can explore on how we actually make that fit within, uh, the resources and the data sets that we actually have gathered over the years to make this process pretty easy for us. What else, uh, is going on or what else could we do? I know the League of Cities and some other groups have talked a lot about, uh, legislatively, um, that whole nuance of local option levies. And should local option levies that are, that are voted on at the local level and approved at the local level, should those be subject to compression or not? That's a, that's a large debate that has a lot of public attitude, survey work, and, uh, and who knows where that will go? There's, there's some interest in reset at sale that's occurred over the years. Uh, meaning, when you sell your home, your AV, uh, number would reset to real market value. Um, I can see pros and cons of that. Um, it would definitely change the tax, taxes that someone collects or, or that someone is charged on their home when they sell their home. Uh, that is a statewide issue and who knows whether that would ever get traction out of Oregon Legislature. And clearly, that would be a, a, a type of initiative that would have to go to the Oregon voters to actually understand that. There's been discussions on whether local option levy should be five-year or ten-year. Um, you know, there, and I can see pros and cons to both. Uh, but, you know, what we are doing and what we, uh, will continue to do is have some great staff discussion. I think this is, uh, a great example of some policy discussion about when, when you're contemplating doing something different. Um, obviously, we have a lot of information that can feed into that policy discussion. And then, um, as we've always enjoyed between the fire district and the city, uh, those occasional, uh, joint meetings just to talk about common issues are always great for us. And, and I know they're also, uh, just valuable for yourselves also. And that will continue with us in the future. You know, we, we, uh, we're all, I think we all strive to be good government. We all strive to provide great value in the community. The fact is, we have a long history of working well together. And, and the city's proven to be, um, a leader when it comes to, uh, what cities can do when it, when you're talking about economic development. You've been very active, uh, when it, you know, tools like, uh, urban renewal and contemplating those enterprise zones, you know, uh, vertical housing, affordable housing are hot topics right now that, um, that, again, the fire district's poised to have those discussions if you choose to go there. Uh, and then just having quality projects and, 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 and I think we're all tasked with transparency when it comes to talking to our, uh, communities, uh, in the future. So, you know, uh, I think we're, we're doing a pretty good job of paying attention and getting engaged on the topic. Uh, we've actually, um, engaged- We've actually engaged at the state level when it comes to this subject, and we've talked to the Senate Finance Committee and the House Finance Committee on different ways that we can help, you know, help give the tools to local government so they can see the information and better predict what is happening. I think we're fairly fortunate, living and, and having the communities that we have here versus other parts of the state that, that may not have the resources, and so we're, we've tried to actually extend out to them some of the things we've learned so that they can be more successful also. But I think all in all, we're all working together very well, and I really appreciate all your support and, and really the partner that Sherwood's been for us. So, with that, I am happy to entertain any questions, because I think I'm almost out of time.
Thank you, Chief Dyke. Counsel, did you have any questions for chief?
I had my questions answered.
All right, well.
One question.
Okay.
Will you share that model then with the city staff on, as you?
Absolutely. So, the nice thing for us, we overlay the city. So when we get the information, we are sharing it with all of our cities.
Great.
So as we, obviously, there may be some different information the city has that would make the actual output better. So we'll be working closely with the city when it comes to what are we going to predict, and, and what do we see happening that the assessor, the same data the assessor's looking at that might be instructive as to what's occurring in the region.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
All right, well, I want to thank you for coming and for giving us this presentation and for allowing us to have it in our main session room so that everyone can view it on camera. And I look forward to hearing your state of the city later on.
Thank you very much.
I will close this work session. We will start back up at seven, giving us, maybe a couple minutes after seven, giving us a little bit of a, a break in between, and I'll see you back for counsel.